You are all set now.
Thank you, James. Welcome, everyone, and good evening and welcome to the Newington Town Council's regular meeting of Tuesday, March 23, 2021. We are calling the meeting to order at 7:00 p.m. If you would, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're also... Wish my screen up so they can see me.
Thank you, everyone. The next item on our agenda is the roll call. If you would, please, Susan.
Okay, Counselor Anist.
Here.
Counselor Braverman.
Here.
Counselor Boudreco.
Here.
Counselor Camillo.
Here.
Counselor Donahue.
Here.
Counselor Manke.
Here.
Counselor Minor.
Here.
Counselor Nagel.
Here.
Mayor Del Buno.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, everyone is here. Thank you. I'm distracted by the town managers here right now because it looks like you might be a troll. Background, there we go. I'm sorry. It's just a little weird techie glitch. I just, you know, being the kind person that I am, felt the need to point it out. All right. Next item is approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion. I do think that we need to add under item XB, it looks like March 9th public hearing minutes. Counselor Manke?
I'd like to make a motion. We add the approval of the March 9th public hearing minutes to the agenda.
Second.
Second by Counselor Anist. Is there any discussion on that? All right, then, we will take a vote to approve the agenda with the addition of item XB, approval of March 9th public hearing minutes. Roll call vote, please, Susan.
Counselor Anist.
Yes.
Counselor Braverman.
Yes.
Counselor Boudreco.
Yes.
Counselor Camillo.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Manke.
Yes.
Counselor Minor.
Yes.
Counselor Nagel.
Yes.
Mayor Del Buno.
Yes.
Nine zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next item on our agenda is public participation. The members of the public may participate. We have a four-minute time limit related to any items they wish. If you are in the Zoom app, you may let us know that you'd like to be recognized by raising your hand in the participants window. And if you are non-Zoom on your phone, star nine will alert us to a raised hand, but we know you want to be recognized. And we'll give it just a minute and I'll switch over to our public window. The first person that I see says Cindy Stam. If you would just state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Cindy Stam, 35, Judge Lane. I'm just calling in regards to the agenda item that's going to come up regarding the shared services. And I'm asking that any decisions not be made tonight and that those decisions detailed for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stam. And the next member of the public that I see is Jessica Weaver. If you would just state your name and address. Thank you.
That's Jessica Weaver, 494 Main Street. I'm also calling in regard of the shared services item that will be coming up later on this agenda. We were just made aware of this. And our issue, or at least my issue with this, is that in this meeting, there was a lot of talk, the shared services committee meeting that happened this past week, there was a lot of discussion about partnership and working together. It is a joint committee and the issue being that the town council would like to take over Board of Education's finances. This is something that is very concerning as it really wasn't done in partnership. We, as the Board of Ed, were not made aware of this. It was just, at least only two members of the Board of Ed knew about it at that meeting. So my real concern is that this really wasn't done in partnership. No research was done. I just don't think this is something that should be voted on tonight. And it seems like it's rushed through. And as someone who will likely is the youngest member and will likely be here in the town for the next 60-plus years, this is something that's really important as we look at the longevity of our town and we look at how our finances are done. The Board of Education is, we talk about, you know, Newington being the first on a lot of things. This was also a topic of discussion. And I would say most of our firsts are in the education and the town cannot and will not survive without our education system. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. Next candidate that I see up, the caller ID says Michael.
Thank you, Mayor Del Buno. This is Michael Branda, 77 Coronado Drive. This morning, I woke up while I'll hike several of my fellow board members to the news that the Shared Services Committee motioned and approved what was worded carefully as a merger of the Town and Board of Ed finance departments. After reviewing that meeting, there were a few key items that I saw that concerned me. One of the reasons that Dr. Brummett was brought here was due to her work in actually sharing services with the town government. She promised to build a true partnership between the Board of Ed and the town. And quite frankly, that effort has felt like it's been a solo one for the last year and a half. And I don't think that her experience in actually working in a town that had shared services was, I don't think that she was brought to the table to bring, to be a part of the solution. To my knowledge, the Shared Services Committee has presented no work to the Board of Education since at least the fall of 2020 and no information relative to merging the finance department, which is how the motion read last night. So the Shared Services Committee, I know, met last week and this week for the first time in almost five months. And both were conveniently timed before the Board of Ed was even able to meet and discuss anything that was brought up at these meetings. Some members on the committee pointed out, they pointed to West Hartford as the example, while others wanted to make it clear, we're not West Hartford, so don't look at them. But people saying those things were actually on the same side of the argument last night. So it seems like we want their end result, but we don't want to put the work in to get there. So, which I found ironic because I know that the Shared Services Committee literally invited the deputy mayor of West Hartford to the meeting in January of 2019. And from what I've heard about that meeting, the committee is basically ignoring his advice on how to proceed. To my knowledge, the Shared Services has not met to discuss the finance department in great detail, but they did discuss facilities more than once at great length. So you can see the work being done on one side, but not on the other. So I'm just wondering where the research was. Where's the analysis? Why was the work worth putting in for this facilities department before making a recommendation, but not with the finance department? Counselor Minor even asked if our town attorney was brought into the conversation and nobody had an answer. And maybe the town attorney was brought in, maybe he wasn't. But to vote on something that you don't even know if you have legal grounds to do seems like a pretty terrible way to conduct business. Lastly, the Board of Education's Finance and Administration put in countless amounts of hours into developing the budget that you will hear tonight. And I think it's damaging to any type of partnership arrangement to know that before we even transmitted our budget to the town manager's office, we knew that we would be set at a 0% increase, which depending on federal grants and other outside sources could force us to cut positions. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Branda. The next person, the caller ID simply says Emily. If you could just state your name and address for the record.
Emily Guy in 20 Kirkham Street. I am calling in support of the superintendent's proposed budget. The superintendent and her team worked extremely hard over the last several months to present the lean and mean budget, stripping everything humanly possible to bring it down as low, as low as she could without, without deteriorating the system. My concern with going any, my concern with actually how low we've gone and then having to go any lower is the inevitable backfilling that we'll have to do in the future. I know this year, we are lucky enough to have some funding from the government, from the federal government coming in that will help. Again, I have a concern that going forward next year and the year after, without those recurring funds, we'll, we'll be trying to fill a hole that we create this year with a lack of budget. So really, I hope that you listen carefully to what the superintendent presents. She's worked really hard with her team to make sure that it is a very fiscally responsible budget. And I guess that's, that's where I'll end. I just, I support the budget and I hope you will as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guyan. The next member of the public is, the caller ID says Forrest Helvey. If you would please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mayor Del Buno. My name is Forrest Helvey. I'm 282 Lamp lighter Lane. And I was just calling in this evening just because I want to speak on behalf of the budget that Dr. Brummett proposed. You know, I, I'll be honest, I was, I was kind of speechless, like Mr. Sylvia in that meeting. You know, we don't always agree on everything, but in that moment, we, we did agree that that was a very surprising budget in terms of putting forward such a bare bones proposal, but it was a responsible proposal, given the current fiscal climate. So I was very surprised, however, to see the proposal from the town manager at 0%, which will result in cuts to potentially staff. And I think right now, I think we all understand full well, as we're getting ready to gear back up to five days a week, in just a couple of weeks, you know, next year, hopefully, you know, we're, we're back five days and stay that way. We need every person on deck. And I think, you know, in last year, we had good show of faith, you know, the town council, Board of Ed, and the superintendent's office worked together. They made it work. We're not talking about a significant amount percentage-wise. We're talking about less than percent. So my hope is that, you know, the town council will look at the feedback from the town, you know, manager, but also take a look at the significant show of faith that Dr. Brummett and her team put forward and approved that budget. The other thing I want to look at too, and just to continue to reiterate, I know there's been a discussion about wants versus needs, and this is a good context and climate for that discussion. But when I think about the amount of state aid that seems to be moving forward, I believe we've so far hit another hurdle of getting almost 60% of the funding for Anna Reynolds. And again, you know, I think we're probably not going to get this kind of support in the future. And it's a, it's a heck of a gamble to, to take a chance and not take advantage of those funds. So I know that we may want to look at other ways to disperse the, the funding for the year ahead, but I hope that we'll also look at the fact we need to take advantage of these opportunities for significant state aid when we get them. The last thing I bring up, and I'm just from having listened to many of our Board of Ed members speak, is apparently with the shared services, I can speak to higher education right now. We're going through a merger process where we are seeing many of our different individual services being consolidated into one larger bureaucratic system. And I understand that higher ed is a much larger, you know, monster than, you know, than our public school district here in Newington. But the principles hold in the sense that frequently, shared services don't always yield better cost, you know, savings. What they can do is actually increase cost savings. Basic research out of MIT shows that there's about a 7%, 8% increase in costs when you consolidate services at scale. Now, again, I'm talking higher education, not K-12 here in Newington. But I would hope, and it doesn't sound like I've gotten that impression, but I would hope that significant research gets done to ensure that any kind of changes that are made will in fact realize the desired outcomes. And maybe that just simply shelving it, not canning the discussion, not stopping the discussion, but shelving it until further research and legwork has been done to ensure that this is in fact going to push us in the direction for the desired outcome of cost savings and not inadvertently hamper Dr. Brummett's ability to operate as efficiently as she has been in the short time that she's been her superintendent. So thank you again, all. I appreciate all the hard work you're doing and I hope you take some of that into consideration. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Helvey, as well. And the next member of the public, the caller ID says Steve Sylvia.
Good evening and thank you, Mayor Del Buno. I'm calling in fundamentally to congratulate the NPS administration under Dr. Brummett for their austere submission of the budget. And I do know that the submission that's been presented to the town council with the town manager asking for, for 0% is a challenge. However, from my vantage point, due to some recent communications just provided by Dr. Brummett to the board, is that we will be seeing a potential benefit from this year's health benefits of, of near or in excess of $1 million. Due to the good and hard work that Dr. Brummett and her team has come up, I believe she only needs about $458,000 in order to bring it to a 0%. Therefore, what I am proposing for consideration to the board in our discussions will be that we target the excess funds that we will be receiving from this year's health benefits and carry it over to next year and apply it. Therefore, the total request of $13 million for the health benefits for our future year that's in this proposed budget would then be reduced to comply with the request of the town manager to be a 0%. In that way, any excess funds from this year would basically be carried over and applied to future years. And it would be my hope that if there's any monies above and beyond the $458,000 that the superintendent requires for that account, I, I would hope I could convince the board to take those excess dollars and return them to the town coffers for other events. Regarding Mr. Branda's insinuation that there was no research done and that we came to conclusions, there was a good lively debate and discussion, all elements and all participants were in fact supportive of consolidation efforts. The subject came up was that, what do we do first? And then what do we do second? My motion that I presented was basically, let's do them both. And that was the recommendation that we, that passed and that we'll be presenting to our respective bodies for further deliberation. So to that end, we are looking to proceed with the consolidation to save money. That is the goal. And to allow our town to have more assets available to do other things that we need to accomplish. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sylvia. I'm just going to check the window one more time. And I do not see any other hands raised at this point. So we look, oh, one just went up. 070, I believe that's Ms. Lyons.
Hi, Rose Lyons, 46 Elton Drive. Sorry about the delay. I got in a little bit late. I just had a question, and I don't know if anybody there can answer it, and it's maybe has been discussed over the weekend. Periodically, I turned on CTN and was watching the public hearing on Planning and Development Committee regarding a couple of bills before the legislature about control over zoning, I believe being turned over to the state rather than the TPZ and affordable housing, which brought me to think about the moratorium that never went through. I think it was proposed and then we thought that perhaps that Victory Gardens would be expanding. And with the pending housing that we had, we may reach that goal of 10%. This afternoon, I had a communication with Representative Turco and that he had reached out to the VA and apparently the Victory Gardens expansion is on hold. And I was just wondering, there was some discussion as well about people not being able to be heard at the Capitol regarding the legislation. So I was wondering whether the town manager or the town planner or anyone from the town had signed up to speak what their position was and if they could share it with us. Also, as much as I don't like Facebook, there was a post regarding the Anna Reynolds project going out of one committee and getting ready to go into the bonding committee. And I thanked Representative Turco for his work in that project. And a comment came back, you may want to watch the town council meeting tonight. So I'm just wondering what they're alluding to on Facebook, if anything. Hope you all stay safe and stay well. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons. I don't see any other hands up, so we will move on. The next item on our agenda, did anyone, first of all, did anyone receive any email correspondence? I did not see any.
I didn't see any.
Okay.
I have none.
Okay, thank you. Next item is remarks by councils on public participation. Counselor Nagel.
Yes, as the chair of the Shared Services Committee, I wanted to clarify and, and correct some misinterpretations that seemed, the public seems to have had. There is nothing on this agenda, nor was there an intent for the council to move on anything. The resolution that was passed, not by everyone, but was passed by majority, was to get the ball moving and its specifics will be presented to you at a later time on our agenda to let you know exactly what that happens to be and what our intent happens to be. There is no, as far as I know, reason behind anybody in order to rush this without going through, seeing if it's feasible and it's, and it's correct. This is on our agenda tonight, I believe it will be, as Mr. Sylvia pointed out, be on the agenda for the Board of Ed tomorrow. But it is not something that we are instructing the council to do anything on at the moment, just so I can know what we have done to get things moving forward. And I'll reserve any further comments until later. And hopefully, those in the public who are concerned about it will wait until we get to that item under, under new business where more information can be shared. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Nagel. Any other council comment? Okay, I just wanted to comment on a couple of things. The, there were some, I believe, misconceptions perhaps on a couple of items. So one, there is no action proposed this evening regarding Anna Reynolds. I'm not sure what the fiscal post was about. But there is nothing on our agenda now or in, as far as I know, in the next upcoming weeks regarding Anna Reynolds. It is going forward unless a catastrophic event happens to this town. And I've said this over and over again, I'm not sure why people are still questioning it, but I don't have any intent of changing anything with that. While there are concerns with the cost of the project, I'm hoping the committee will work on that. But there is no intent by myself or as far as I know, any members of this council to do anything different than what the people had voted on. So that being said, I'm not sure why the public perception is out there. Someone certainly is spreading that idea and it's not coming from this council. Secondly, in terms of the shared services piece, there were just a couple of comments made about the town wanting to take over and having pushed it through and about taking action this evening. The item is on our agenda this evening merely to get an update from the committee on what was recommended by the committee. The motion at the committee level was a recommendation to be made to both bodies, the Board of Education and the town council. And so we'll hear those recommendations and then the council and the Board of Education can begin their work to look at those procedures and what needs to happen next. But there is no action on our agenda for this evening unless there is a motion brought to the floor, which I don't anticipate. There is no resolution in our packet. It is merely a discussion item under new business this evening. So if people want to hear more about it and get more of the specifics, certainly stay tuned for that later in our meeting. And Mr. Sylvia, interesting concept regarding the health benefits. And that's certainly something that I think this council, I'll be requesting, and I mentioned it at our last meeting, to be put on a future agenda, to be discussed at more length, at greater length in terms of the process that's in place right now for the handling of health benefit surplus. So stay tuned for a future agenda item on that. All right, I don't see any other items up, so we will continue on with our agenda. We will begin now consideration of old business. And the first item under old business is our health update regarding COVID-19. I don't believe Charles Brown is able to be here this evening. So Mr. Chapman, will you be handling this?
Yes, I, I did talk to Mr. Brown on Saturday. We're still in the red zone, so we're going to remain there. So nothing really has changed as far as the opening of any buildings and so forth. It's been determined that we will stay as-is until we drop out of the red zone. And I think it may be where you're going to see more towns end up in the red zone again with what's going on recently. But I did get an update from Megan Manke on what's taking place. And I just want to read what she had sent me today, which is that all the first doses of vaccine have been completed in all of the senior centers in the four towns. The second doses are being scheduled at the centers now and are underway. In fact, they began today and they're scheduled almost every day through April. There are five scheduled, a second dose clinics scheduled in Newington. And the senior center is no longer taking any new scheduling for the first shot. That's now been completed. So there won't be any more scheduling by the senior center except for those receiving the second shot. And that's essentially it. So it's moving along. The response has been good, but there's still a long ways to go. And we'll have to see how everything shakes out. But right now, I'm concerned that the, there's a real uptick right through the whole state, actually. And that's really before this opening takes, takes the impact that it will. So I would just be patient because it's not going to be soon to open up our senior center or library or Parks and Rec or the town hall. So it's disappointing, but we've got to maintain a level of safety in the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Counselor Minor.
Thank you, Madam Eric. Just real quick, Keith, do you know if CCHD is planning on any additional first rounds on more of a multi-town basis? I know there have been some discussion about possibly the Berlin Fairgrounds on Max Vaccination Clinic. Do you know if there's been any advancement on that or no?
What Megan gave me today was the CCHD and the emergency management are currently working to coordinate regional clinics, possibly in May, looking at the Berlin Fairgrounds as the location. That's the latest that you provided this afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
Any other council comment or question? Deputy Mayor Boudreco.
Yes, Keith, thank you for the update. What gets confusing is there's so many different statistics to be following. And in one press release, you know, the one statistic is quoted and, oh, we're doing good. And then another statistic says we're doing bad. But the news this morning, you know, where in cases per capita, Connecticut is quite high, I think that directly impacts the designations of red zoned, you know, towns. So although we're hearing things about hospitalizations being down and positivity rate down and whatever, the per capita, it was quite concerning. So I can understand the caution with reopening.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I will say, we just got a briefing at where I work today in our staff meeting, and we were told very clearly to continue to maintain the same precautions that we have had in place, that we are not to have any in-person meetings, including team meetings between teachers, regardless of spacing and regardless of anything. The only time we're allowed to have our masks off is if we're eating. You know, really, I mean, our, our bosses came down pretty straightforward today. So I think everybody's a little concerned with some of the numbers maybe that are happening right now. So I, you know, we'll continue to listen to our health district and we'll see where it takes us, see, see what those numbers do. All right, thank you, Mr. Chapman. I believe you're on for the next item on the agenda, which is town hall project update as well.
As far as the town hall goes, it continues with the little odds and ends that are left to do. We still have pavement to be put down on the new parking lot in the front of the building. We are having the memorial monument placed in the, what's going to be the rear of the building between the library and the, and the town hall. That'll be placed before Memorial Day, so we can have our services out there. As far as the remaining, we think we found a solution to the snow and ice situation on the stairway. It'll be heated, stairway pads that'll be installed and plugged in when bad weather is predicted. We're not sure how that's going to be paid for at this point. And then we still have the issue with the air conditioning on the roof with the shock absorber problem. And that's, that's got to be resolved pretty soon because that's going to start up with noise and vibration again, this, this warmer weather. So, but other than that, you know, So but other than that, you know, we still have a lot of little, little things that we're working on with the contractor in the building itself, but it's moving along.
Okay, great. Councilor Donahue?
Keith, I just have to say, I drove by the police station with the plastic down and it looks, it looks very, very nice, blends in with the building up here and everything. So, you know, nice job.
Right.
Councilor Anist?
Thank you. Keith, is there any discussion about putting flags up around the memorial, the Veterans Memorial?
Yeah, our plan is, once the memorial is placed to its permanent location, it's large enough, the pad is large enough where we'll be able to drill a flagpole stanchions into the concrete pad. So there will be flags that will be put up there on a permanent basis, yes.
Thank you.
Any other council commenter question? Okay, I don't see any, so we will continue on. The next item is the senior center HVAC and window replacement projects. We did discuss this at our last meeting. We do have a resolution in front of us. The request is for a budget transfer from the serial bond interest expense line for the money that's needed to complete the project. Would someone be willing to read the motion in and then we can discuss further? No one wants to read it?
I'll read it.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Certification. In accordance with Section C-808 of the Town Charter, I hereby certify that there exists free from encumbrances and following appropriations in the general fund. The amount's listed below. Account number 11014-8220. Serial bond interest in the amount of $236,284. Janet Murphy, Director of Finance. Resolved that the Newington Town Council hereby transfers the above certified funds in the general fund to the following accounts in the Public Building Fund and Capital Improvement Fund. Account number 31160-88103. Senior Center Window Replacement, $118,800. Account number 30640-88112. SDC HVAC Replacement, $117,484.
Motion's made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Nagel, and now discussion on this item. All right, I guess our discussion last week was enough. I don't see any handles. Go ahead with the roll call vote, please.
Councilor Anist?
Yes.
Councilor Braverman?
Yes.
Councilor Badrico?
Yes.
Councilor Camillo?
Yes.
Councilor Donahue?
Yes.
Councilor Manki?
Yes.
Councilor Minor?
Yes.
Councilor Nagel?
Yes.
Mayor Del Buno?
Yes.
Nine zero.
Thank you, Susan.
You're welcome.
All right, next item on our agenda is the revised job description for animal control officer. We discussed this last week as well. I know we have the chief on with us this evening, I see. Welcome, Chief. And Mr. Chapman. We have before us the old job description as well as the revised. And I would look for someone to read in the resolution.
I can do it.
You guys are making me feel like a teacher. I'm going to start calling up people that don't have their hands up.
Let me put my glasses on first.
I'm a teacher by day. Watch out.
Resolve, the Newington Town Council hereby approves the amendment to the classification and pay plan by approving a revised job position description for the Animal Control Officer A-5 position as recommended by Keith Chapman, Town Manager, in his capacity as Personnel Director.
Second.
By Councilor Anis, thank you. And we'll open it for discussion. And Chief, if you'd have anything you wanted to add or anything you want us to know?
Sure. Over the years, we've been sharing services with Weathersfield. And we've had part-time employees rather than full-time. And it's been real difficult when we've hired part-time animal patrol officers. We train them and then they stay for a short period of time and they move on to full-time positions. So what we've done, we've consolidated with Weathersfield and it's true regionalization. You're going to see a savings, but not only a savings, but there's going to be improved customer service. So there's some immediate savings with sharing the salary and the benefits. And then there's going to be some long-term savings with a vehicle. Right now, we have a vehicle, Weathersfield has a vehicle. So we'll be able to go down to one vehicle, share those costs of maintenance and fuel. So we'll see some immediate savings. And then there's going to be some additional savings down the road with the equipment. So like I said, it's a win-win. It's not only saving the town money, but it's also improving our services. And I appreciate the council's timely reviews. We like to get this going as soon as possible.
If I may just add, you know, we talked about this the other day. And there was a suggestion that wherever it says Town of Newington, we should also say Town of Weathersfield. However, this is the Town of Newington's job description for the Animal Control Officer. Weathersfield will have their own job description because they may have different needs and different responsibilities for our ACO to work when they're in Weathersfield. So each town will have their own job description. So this job description is solely for the Town of Newington.
Thank you for clarifying that. That was an outstanding question that we had last week. I see several hands up, so I'll go to Councilor Minor, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, just to clarify, so this is going to be one full-time employee employed by the Town of Newington. Am I correct in that?
Correct. It's one full-time employee. She's actually a part-time now that we're making her full-time. But she's going to be shared with Weathersfield. So her duties will be, you know, in Newington and Weathersfield. We're going to manage it. So we'll do the pay, manage the program. And then at the end of the year, we'll bill the Town of Weathersfield 50% of the total cost.
Okay, so that will be theoretically a Monday through Friday position with after-hours on-call in case of emergency. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Minor. Councilor Manki?
Yeah, just, but again, as I said last time, this is a great example of how we can share services to get more service at a reduced cost. And I think it's, unfortunately, I think with budgets where they are, it's the wave of the future. We have to, we have to start finding ways we can share services with other towns that are in similar situations as ours, that we can use the same personnel or some, find some way to use more, the same services, the same service, but have more people help out with it. And I appreciate, I think this is a great idea and I applaud the Town Manager for initiating this.
Thank you, Councilor Manki. Deputy Mayor Badrico?
Yeah, just a general comment on, I mean, I've been involved in, you know, a lot of different job descriptions. And just from my perspective, it seems like it would be confusing for one individual who's being paid by one cost center or organization, whatever, to have two job descriptions where the minute they cross the border into Weathersfield, they may be having different job responsibilities. And then they turn around and come back into Newington and they're operating under a different job description. I mean, I'm sure that the responsibilities are very similar, but it just seems confusing to have two separate ones, in my opinion. It's just my opinion. And then secondly, the, normally when there will be variable hours or, you know, maybe not in municipal descriptions, but in other descriptions where there are variable hours or occasional weekend duty or night duty, sometimes it says that somewhere within the job function or the job description. So I'm just wondering whether that might be a bullet that could be added. It's just a suggestion. Thank you.
Councilor Minor?
Just one additional quick question. Is this a union position, Chief? And if so, what union do they fall under?
It's not a union position. And your question is a good one because she is working for both police departments. Each police department has our own separate union. So I, it's, and not to mention the fact that she's going to be performing part-time for the town and part-time for Weathersfield for combined 40 hours. So it's non-union because we wouldn't know what union she could belong to. If, you know, I had an issue here and I had to discipline her and she is covered by the Weathersfield Police Union. There were too many factors to come into play. The best thing to do was to do a non-union position based on the difficulty of establishing union membership and the fact that really, she's really working part-time for both agencies.
I think in addition to that, being part of the administration, the hours of work will be determined by the needs without concern about overtime, pay and so forth. So she may work five days or four days or six days, depending on the demand and what she needs to get accomplished. So it makes a lot of sense to have it as an administrative position rather than a bargaining unit position.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before we take the vote? Okay, we'll move to roll call vote, please.
Councilor Anis?
Yes.
Councilor Braverman?
Yes.
Councilor Badrico?
Yes.
Councilor Camillo?
Yes.
Councilor Donahue?
Yes.
Councilor Manki?
Yes.
Councilor Minor?
Yes.
Councilor Nagel?
Yes.
Mayor Del Buno?
Yes.
Nine zero.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, next item on our agenda is the amended fit lot agreement. And we have before us a resolution to approve the amendment to the Programmatic Grant Addendum to the Fit Lot Partnership Agreement. We discussed this at our last meeting. If we could just go ahead and read the resolution in. Deputy Mayor Badrico, oh, Depp, sorry, Councilor Nagel, go right ahead.
All right.
Dale didn't ever hand up. I was just going to call on her. Go ahead, Dave.
I felt guilty. Resolve that the Newington Town Council hereby authorizes Keith Chapman, Town Manager, to execute the Fit Lot Partnership Agreement Programmatic Grant Addendum, Amendment One, for the Fit Lock Outdoor Fitness Park located at the Clem Lamier Sports Complex, a copy of which is attached to this resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Braverman, and discussion on this. Councilor Donahue, your hand is up. I'm not sure if that's intended or not.
It is not. I dropped my packet on the keyboard.
All right, all set. Mr. Chapman, did you want to add anything about this? I know we discussed it last time.
I think it's pretty self-explanatory. It's not a major, major issue, but it's something that has to get accomplished.
Okay. Any council commenter discussion on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll move to roll call vote.
Councilor Anis?
Yes.
Councilor Braverman?
Yes.
Councilor Badrico? Councilor Camillo?
Yes.
Councilor Donahue?
Yes.
Councilor Manki?
Yes.
Councilor Minor?
Yes.
Councilor Nagel?
Yes.
Mayor Del Buno?
Yes.
Nine zero.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
The next item in our agenda is Department Budget Review. And the first item under that is Board of Education. And I'm just going to expand my screen over so I can see who's on with us. All right. So I know we have Superintendent Brummett with us, welcome. And Chair of the Board of Education, Mr. Vassella, welcome. I'm looking, I'm sorry, I see Lou Jekomowitz as well from the Board of Education. Welcome, Lou. Mr. Chapman, do you need to get us started or are we all set to turn the floor over?
No, I think you're all set. Go right ahead.
Okay, great. Dr. Brummett, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Get into my screen share here.
Sarah's at a meeting right now, she can't talk.
I don't.
As Dr. Brummett's getting ready to present the budget, I'd like to thank the Town Council for their opportunity tonight to have letting you hear from Dr. Brummett and our administrative team. This budget was a process this year that was a difficult one in that we tried to cut as close as we could and eliminate any monicum of overages in our budget. And I compliment Dr. Brummett and her team for that process. Earlier, the comment was made about our budget shortfall, if you want to call it that, in the insurance health benefits covering it. I'll let Dr. Brummett handle that, but I don't believe that can be carried over into the next year's budget. But maybe she can address that. But I, just to clarify that, that it's not an item that we can use to help fund the 2122 budget. But that being said, Dr. Brummett and her team have prepared this and I'll let her proceed. And of course, we're available for questions at any time during the presentation.
Thank you so much, Paul. And yes, you're correct, the health benefit credit for this year needs to be cemented in this year. And next year's health benefit credit is not yet determined. It won't be final until late summer or fall after the dust settles with all of the expenditures from this year, as I understand it. So I will be briefed this evening because I know many Town Council members have already seen this when they attended the Board Budget Session a few weeks back. Just to give a quick overview, our, the goals, or my goals in the budget, and they're reflected both district-wide as well as what's put in the budget, are to continue our preschool expansion, continue to expand and support our social emotional learning that's particularly important in the middle of a pandemic, continue to implement our mastery-based learning practices, also very important during a pandemic, and supporting the collaboration and coherence of our middle and high school academies, making sure we continue to offer the appropriate courses that are mandated as well as structures for all of our graduation requirements, and make sure that our students have access to an equitable educational experience that will prepare them for careers of the future. Again, another very important item during a pandemic. I wanted to go over our student demographics because I think it really does play into some of the budgetary issues that are before the Town Council this evening. In terms of enrollment, I know there's always a lot of interest in the enrollment of a school district. And I've been asked over the last few weeks, you know, how did that play out? So a few folks asked me, when was the last time we closed schools? We closed Numedo School in 1981 and Center School in 1978. Our highest enrollment was right around the early, or 2008. And our lowest enrollment was back in the 80s. So we are kind of a slow, but not significant decline in enrollment. But what's really important for the town and, and you remember the public to understand is, while it appears that we see a little dip right around here in our enrollment, that actually is at the pinnacle of when magnet schools became open to all of our students. So while it may seem like our enrollment is down, that would be true for kids in district. But we are now responsible for about 180 kids that go out to a plethora of magnet schools throughout the Hartford area and Crack region. And that is an annual cost to the district of about $400,000. And that's not including those kids who are eligible for special ed or 504. So the enrollment, really, if you, if you consider the fiscal responsibility of this budget, it is really, has not changed that substantially. I also get a lot of questions about our ratios. And I saw or recently heard of a ratio of 11 to 1. And that really, I'm not sure, I think what that is, is if everyone, if every teacher in the district took 11 kids, I suppose you could say that's an 11 to 1 ratio. But we, as every, as many folks on the meeting know, you have to have certification in the right area to serve kids. And some of our teachers work as remedial teachers and some are special ed teachers or have, you know, have a limited scope of what they do. So when you look at those teachers who teach in a classroom, our ratio is 20 to 1. So I wanted to be clear about that. And our average per pupil expenditure is basically the state. per pupil expenditure is basically the state average. There are a hundred sixty-nine towns in Connecticut. Newington Falls annually about one oh eight. So we are right at or a little bit above the state average for per pupil expenditure. So again, very fiscal fiscal responsible spending in the town. Folks asked me as well, hey, you know, is your staffing still the same now that you've had some decline in enrollment? And the and the answer to that is no. We had a high of staffing in Newington teaching-wise, certified staff of three seventy-one at oh eight, oh nine, and our current staffing is three fifty-three. So we're down eighteen certified staff. And in oh seven, oh eight, we were at a high of one forty-seven paratutor staff or non-certified. And currently we are at one twenty-four, so we're down twenty-three. So we have made some adjustments downward in our staffing as a result of some enrollment changes. Now, this chart, I'll do it very briefly because I did share it last year and it's just a way to show those in the audience this evening that, you know, while we've had some changes demographically over the years from the seventies when there were no special ed services to speak of, five oh four didn't exist, free reduced lunch wasn't counted, we had very few open choice kids, less than one percent of our children were EL. Fast forward to the eight, the two thousand eight where you saw that significant jump in that decade to a ten percent increase. And similarly, five oh four went up by a percentage, EL went up by a three percent, free reduced lunch escalated, open choice and magnets started becoming an expense for the district. And then you can really see the escalation in the past three to four years where special ed is now at fifteen percent, fifteen and a half percent. Five oh four kids are close to six percent. Our EL population is seven percent of our kids do speak a different language other than English as a first language. Thirty percent of our kids are eligible for free reduced lunch. We have a hundred and ten kids in our choice program and a hundred and seventy-five kids in our magnet school program. Many, many or most of those we do have to pay for. Oops, for some reason my screen decided not to advance. Oops. Racially diverse racial diversity continues to be on the rise. We are predominantly shrinking in our white population and escalating in our Hispanic Latino population. Our other minority groups have remained pretty constant. Here's our EL population, just to summarize that quickly. We are up about six percent from, I'm sorry, we're up from six percent to seven percent this year. And I'm sorry, this screen gets a little blocked by the attendees. And we have students that are identified this year alone have been sixty-seven students, which is up from fifty-seven. Cost escalation over the years, you can see that special ed costs are continuing to rise. One thing that is kind of important to know is, and this did help us with our budget this year, as due to COVID, you'll notice that the special ed costs from last year to this year did dip a little bit, so that is reflected in our special ed costs. The IDEA grant is the grant we get from the federal government that helps us offset special ed costs. You can see that over the past five years, it's been minimal increases there. Cost of EL students continues to rise. It's up over a hundred thousand in five years. Cost of magnet school tuition, as I mentioned, hit a high in nineteen twenty. It's a little down this year. Again, that might be reflective of the pandemic. The cost of transport homeless kids, that's not something we had to deal with about seven, eight years ago. Now it's close to a one hundred thousand dollar expense. And I believe I've shared with the Town Council that I have argued vociferously for the governor to reconsider flat funding ECS this year, which for Newington is actually a loss. Newington was slated to get about another four hundred thousand dollars this year. I talked to all the legislators I could. I testified at the Appropriations Committee and I don't know whether that'll make a difference, but right now what you see on this chart is what we will get. And as you can see, looking at twenty fifteen to present, we've had very minimal increases, unfortunately. That does impact what comes to the town. So in short, we came into this budget season with a very careful eye toward no new positions. It's really a maintenance budget and one that we just want to make sure we're keeping up with any mandates. So and this budget also takes into account the E S S E R two funding, which is is designed by federal guidelines to be a way of maintaining or expanding your COVID relief efforts. And for us, we're we're planning on using it to continue our security support. Security is one of the allowable expenses as well as some of our remedial staff. We also want to retain our preschool staff this year. We're no longer in violation of integration requirements. The program's going very well. And the town, I'll later on explain what we've discussed relative to the pre-K tuition. We're adding a few extra courses at the high school, trying to make sure we continue to expand our culturally diverse courses and our courses that offer our students college credit. A lot of kids leave Newington High with a year or two of college under their belt because of all those E C E courses that they can take. We learned during the pandemic that some of our online music programs could be enhanced and they were actually considered to be a resource that teachers wanted to keep, so that small amount of money will be a K-two music program. We've also learned a lot about formative assessments online this year and our teachers had a free trial and really loved a program called Go Formative Assessment. You can look at a student's work while you're sitting at your computer and monitor it and give them feedback in real time. And we're now expanding that to the middle and high school. And we're using the E S S E R two funds to fund a program called Effective School Solutions at John Wallace, which will serve social and emotionally challenged students in the middle level. So those are really the only changes to our program and any significant enhancements were paid for out of the E S S E R two monies. And here's just sort of the iteration of our budget. When we started out, if nothing had changed, it was a seven point three percent increase. And then we obviously looked at it for any errors and that allowed us to cut by about forty-eight thousand dollars. We have applied the non-lapsing fund, which last year we did put two percent in with permission from the Town Council. Thankfully, we did do that because all of that needs to be utilized to keep this budget request low. So that brought us down to four point six three. We always look at, we we get all of our insurance figures from Janet or from actually from our broker. And then as time goes along, we get some adjustments. So our initial adjustment right now is four sixteen oh three seven. So that's a reduction that brought us down to four point oh nine percent. We did utilize, we did not have any money in the budget for technology, so we used our health benefit credit that was in our budget for this year to pay for technology for for our projected technology for next year. And our out-of-district tuitions, as I mentioned, some of our special expenses have gone down this year, presumably because of the pandemic. So we were able to reduce our special ed out-of-district tuition budget line by six fifty-three to two point three six. We eliminated some vehicles that we decided just weren't, you know, not the right time to buy. So that brought us from two point three two then to two point two six. We did use some realized savings to do general buy-heds. That's a strategy we used last year as well to keep our ask low. That brought us down to one point eight one. This shows you initially, we thought we were going to get three hundred and nine thousand dollars in E S S R. So this is our original offset, which brought us to one point four one. Then we have reduced other maintenance lines and we'll use some of our CIP money to do that, one point three seven. We are increasing our open choice enrollment for next year, so that will give us a credit of two hundred and forty thousand. We are adding E S S to John Wallace, but as I mentioned, we're using an offset of additional E S S E R two money. We, our original estimation was about six hundred and eighty thousand and then we got a word that it was going to be about one point two million, so we quickly made those adjustments. And then additional E S S E R offsets would just be applying it to some of our staff that brought us down to point eight four. So that is what the board approved back a few weeks ago. Then we got into some things that were underway that weren't quite resolved at the time that the board had to approve our budget. And we were actively working on an early retirement incentive plan that we offered to our our teachers. Unfortunately, again, due to COVID, I think people were skittish about taking advantage of it, but we did get one taker and that will allow us to reduce our salary line next year by another fifty thousand. And then I believe that we are on the right pathway to allow the pre-K tuition to remain as an offset or to not remain, but to become an offset to the board's operating budget. If that's approved, then I know that's part of some upcoming Town Council meetings, then that would be another hundred and fifty thousand dollar offset. So that brings the grand total down to seventy-seven million, two eleven, six thirteen or a point five eight increase. These are just kind of high-level overviews. I mean, though our budget requests needed to be very low this year, both Mr. Chapman and I did negotiate contracts and they both included raises, so those had to be accounted for. Typically, our special ed budget goes up much higher than point one eight percent, but luckily, like I said, it's been a good year special ed-wise. Our benefits line had to go up and that's that increase there. This line shows the the use of the non-lapsing fund grants and the E S S E R money. So that allowed us to reduce our budget or a negative of three point two three. And academic, obviously, other non-bargaining folks get a small raise. We did have still some money that for technology that we had to set aside in the budget. And the board approved a budget of point eight four. Tonight's request is point five eight. So here's sort of another high-level overview. Again, it's a four hundred and forty-three thousand dollar increase or point five eight. And just sort of a quick summary of any implications for future budget requests. Keeping in mind that we did utilize the health benefit credit to pay for technology so that that money is already being expended for those purposes. We utilized two thousand, excuse me, two million dollars of the non-lapsing fund. The E S S E R two monies are already accounted for in this budget, so it's between, it's a two-year but grant, so we're using approximately six and a half, six hundred fifty thousand this year and approximately the same amount next year. It has to be spent over two years. There is more COVID rescue money coming. I know the town will receive some, the board will receive some. We haven't gotten a firm number, nor have we been told how it can be spent yet. And in light of all the above, if a zero percent increase does happen, yes, I can look at the COVID rescue money, assuming I can use that. But I do want to let the Town Council know that these monies go away in twenty twenty-three, so anything that we can do is, anything we're using as offsets now does create a funding cliff down the road and may cause a larger ask in a few years. So that's just something I wanted to put out there. These are budget requests in our district reference groups, so these are all towns that are considered similarly situated financially and size-wise as us, at least by the state of Connecticut. And I think you'll take note that other than Old Saybrook, we are the lowest board ask in this this whole featured groups here. And I pulled from every every D R D that was available, that was was posted. I did want to quickly touch upon capital. This historically, I just wanted to point out to the town that in last year's budget, we only got the required appropriation. We did not receive any money last year in capital for security, roof repair or HVAC. All of those had been requested last year but were not allocated. Similarly, in nineteen twenty, we did get just the about a hundred and eighty thousand for technology and then the one hundred and twenty-five for the required allocation. So we didn't get any bus money over the last two years. And then seventeen eighteen was the last year that we had an allocation for HVAC or roof repair. And eighteen nineteen was the last year that we had bus allocation money. I am pleased to notice, and I did read this in the Town Manager's Proposed Budget, that we are being potentially allocated one point six million dollars for the Newington High School roof. That is absolutely something that we would like to move on and we've already started to look at some estimates for that and just waiting to get, you know, approval on how to move forward on that. The Town Manager also did allocate busing money for us this year. We did not request any for this year, but we would apply it for next year's buses, I suppose. We we have not, you know, obviously this year didn't request it because we didn't have any buses that needed replacement this year. We did put off that year this year because with the COVID impact, our buses were not being utilized as much for the last, close to a year now, they've been used, but not to the level of a typical school year. And we were allocated as as at least in the initial budget proposal from the Town Manager for two hundred thousand dollars in security, which was something that we did request. So that's that's wonderful to see. And that really brings my presentation to a close. I would be happy to entertain any questions or whatever the Council, however the Council wants to proceed after this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bremm, for that detailed presentation. I'll open it up to the Council for comments or questions. Sorry, I'm still navigating, moving the screens around a little bit. Hold on one second, guys. Deputy Mayor Padreco?
Yeah, Dr. Bremm, first of all, I want to thank you for you, you know, the material you provided us in our budget book. It was, it was a lot, but it was very easy to follow and and provided a lot more explanation than we've gotten in the past, so I thank you for that. I actually just have two kind of questions. I noticed under support school counseling and psychological services have decreased a little bit. And I was just curious because, you know, a lot of information we hear in the news is about how, you know, the students are suffering, you know, almost similar, some of them to PTSD because of COVID and the isolation and and whatever, so I actually would have expected these budget lines to go up, so I wonder if you can just explain that.
Sure. They actually have gone up in previous years. But as I mentioned, so we kind of had a status quo approach and some of those monies may have been reallocated, but what we have been putting our resources into is what's called Effective School Solutions, which is a, an agency that comes in and runs a program. Currently, there's one at the high school this year at Martin Kellogg and then next year at Wallace. And that actually provides the equivalent of a full-time social worker. So some of our resources have gone into that because they actually have the ability to spend more time working with families and dealing with children with school phobia. So they are sort of a different way that we're allocating some of those resources.
For the Town Councilor, it's Councilors itself versus the Board of Education budget, there's a significant difference. And I know it's because the Board of Education budget includes many things that the Town Council budget doesn't. So can you just explain like, you know, a hundred and six thousand for purchase services and and four hundred and twenty-four for, well, actually, so it's almost like five hundred thousand for purchase services for the Board of Education. Can you just explain that, please?
Yeah, actually, that's ironic that you brought that up because some of the E S S resources come under purchase services. We also do quite a bit of assessments, which is a purchase service, some of our security. And Lou, I think you're on the line if you want to chime in on any of the ones that I missed.
Again, which program were you speaking of? Was that the totality of the budget?
Well, so totality, it says under line item three hundred, line item five hundred.
For the whole budget? Okay.
Yeah. Specifically under Board of Education code twenty-three ten.
Okay, in that twenty-three ten account, there's legal services for the Board of Ed for all negotiations and other legal matters that they had need to address. There is the cost of the SRO program, which is shared with town. All of our new initiatives are initially placed in the contract service area of the Board of Ed, pending approval, making it through the rest of the budget. Then they will be reallocated to other locations in the budget, depending on what it is. Then they will be relocated to other locations in the budget, depending on what it is. Let me think, what else is in there? Between, and there would be a number of business memberships for the professional organizations for district memberships, for K, correct, District Management Council. And there's two others, can't think of them off the top of my head.
That makes it clearer for me, thank you.
Okay.
And then just one other question, Dr. Brahman. I mean, I thought I saw something actually from Congressman Larson regarding, I mean, he sent out the announcement of the additional COVID funds and then there was a town-by-town breakdown. And I guess the estimate for Newington for education was a little bit over three million dollars. So do you know whether that has to be, is there a certain timeline on when that has to be spent? And when you'll get clearer guidance on how that can be allocated?
Yes, thank you so much. And before I forget, I, with our school counseling budget, I did forget we had a retirement this year. And the breakage on that was a nice savings because we typically hire someone at a much lower pay rate. So that is the reason you saw some drop off on that account as well. As for the relief money that was recently signed by President Biden, we haven't gotten our exact amount yet. There were estimates, I think I'm hearing three point one million for the board. I believe it's to be spent by twenty twenty-three. And I saw a letter from Commissioner, no, not Commissioner, Secretary of Education Cardona. And he just stated in the letter that we'll get more guidance, but it is for COVID relief efforts. So I don't know much more than that, how strict the parameters will be. They probably will be very similar to the E S S E R two, where there's a focus on social emotional remediation. We didn't have, don't have a lot of remediation services in our budget right now because we use the E S S E R two money to keep what we had put in place this year. So I'm hoping, once we get more clarification on how we can spend that money, we can then put forth some additional supports for kids that are probably going to come back with some challenges, especially if they were remote.
I know this, and again, it's all, you know, kind of hypothetical now. But I do believe I read in some documents that there might be a kind of a broader latitude in what it terms, in terms of providing, you know, COVID, COVID impacted relief. It might be technology, you know, improved technology for virtual learning, which I know is a big, a big part of your budget. And in things like even HVAC systems, just ensuring that the air, the air is flowing, you know, freely, whatever. So I think hopefully there'll be more latitude where you can possibly use it for some infrastructural needs as well.
Yes, I think, and we were, we did receive some COVID relief monies earlier this year in the fall that allowed us to do some of those, you know, air handler situations and masks and what have you. But yeah, I'm hoping that the latitude is there so that we can, you know, definitely deal with whatever comes our way in the fall.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
I thought I unmuted, I apologize. Councilor Manki, would you mind if I jump in? I just have something to offer on the American Rescue Plan.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you. I had forwarded an email to Chairman Vassell, I'm hoping he received it. But we had gotten some guidance from C C M regarding both the town side and the educational funding deadlines. So I, you know, I agree with you, there, it looks like there is a little bit of latitude, at least on the information we have thus far. So Senator Larson had sent us a correspondence with the, with the figures that had passed and you're, the three point one for your side. And then I don't have it in front of me, I believe the town side was two point eight or two point nine. And then the, they're talking about the ability to use the funds to address learning losses. And there's percentages around these, so like you can use certain percentages for certain items. But I can certainly forward this to you in case you haven't received it, Dr. Brahman. But, you know, it, it's, there are specific pieces, but then there are some latitudes also. So like hiring and retaining teachers and other school personnel. They may use for purchasing computers, hotspot devices, online learning, unique needs to support the unique needs of underserved students and foster and homeless youth, training and professional development, purchasing, purchasing supplies for cleaning and sanitation, carrying out I D A requirements, providing assistive technology and adapt, like there, there's a whole list. So I was really encouraged to see, you know, kind of how it was delineated, at least from C C M's perspective. So I, I'm not sure if you received that or not. I, I believe Chairman Vassella received it, but I'll shoot it out to you too.
Yes, appreciate it.
To have, if you have a.
State Department hasn't sent us any direct guidance, but if, if C C M has more information, that's great.
Yeah, at, at least it's another resource for all of us to take. So I'll shoot that out to you as well. But I was pretty encouraged to see some of the, the ideas that were put forth in that memo. So hopefully it, there will be some latitude for us.
Absolutely.
Go ahead, Councilor Manki, I apologize.
No problem. I just would also like to thank you for your presentation. It is presented understandably, so I can, I can get a grasp on it. Would it be possible for you to send us a copy of the, the share, the PowerPoint, so we can, we can review it later on individually? I'd appreciate that. And I guess my other question is on this rescue, I like the term rescue money. It's, it's, we all need a little rescue, I think, at this point. Oh, will this money go to offset things in this year's budget? Or offset things in next year's budget? Or would they be things additional to this year's budget, additional to next year's budget? I know it's kind of early and we don't really know what it's all.
I guess that depends on what happens tonight. But I don't know, I honestly don't know if it can be used to offset this year's budget. I mean, it's, it's definitely meant for next year's budget and the year after. So I'm sorry if I misunderstood your question.
Well, I mean, next year's budget being the one starting in July.
Right, what we're planning for tonight. It, it's meant for, yes, I, I haven't even seen it yet. In fact, the application for the E S S E R two money hasn't even, it's not due yet. In fact, they extended it to the eighteenth. So we have not even applied for the E S S E R two money. And then the rescue money, we haven't seen any guidance on of, since, from the state, that is, from the State Department.
Well, that's, it's typical, they announce it and then they give you the guidance once down the road.
Pretty much, but.
And the process.
We'll have to just take a wait-and-see approach. But I mean, three point one million is never bad news.
Right, exactly, exactly, okay. So your, your intent is then to use it to supplement next year's budget?
Yes, my, if I had my druthers and it comes out as I hope, then I would plan to try to do programming around how to, how to help children who come in that need accelerated learning. So that could take the form of tutoring, perhaps even a few teachers, tutors. It, you know, we've, we've begun some planning, but without having guidelines, it's a little challenging, but we have some ideas. We do have ideas.
So then these should, these should be a temporary fix then, because it would be part of your regular budget. So it'd be just the temporary, okay, thank you.
All right, any other council comment or question? All right, I don't see any, so I think we're all set. Thank you again, Dr. Brahman and Lou and Mr. Chairman for joining us this evening and for your presentation. Greatly appreciate it. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, folks, we'll move on. We're going to continue the department budget review. Next up is miscellaneous programs not previously discussed. Mr. Chapman and Ms. Murphy, would you like to take over?
Janet, you're on.
Yep, I don't think there's any other departments or areas that we haven't touched yet, unless there's anything else, you have any additional questions regarding.
All right, I will open it up for council discussion. All right, I don't see any hands up. I know we all have a lot of homework to do in terms of the information we just received and what we've already received from town staff, there certainly is a lot to review. So if no one has any questions, we'll continue on with our agenda. Okay, next item for this evening is to set the tentative council budget for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. So as you know, right now, the budget that was presented to us has been the town manager's proposed budget. We have been presented the entire budget and at this point, we need to entertain a motion. I'm sorry, there is no motion this evening, is there? I don't see one in our packet, is it on the? I apologize, I thought we had to actually accept the budget this evening from the town manager, but I may be an error. Okay, so we are allowed to make changes now that we have reviewed the budget. It's, I'm going to read the memo, so. We can propose, the councillors have the opportunity to propose and consider changes to the town manager's proposed budget. After deliberation by the council on any proposed changes, a legal notice of the town council tentative budget will be published electronically on the town website and in the Hartford Current at least five days prior to the April sixth, twenty twenty-one public hearing. Additional changes may be made to the budget after the public hearing and up to the date of adoption scheduled for Tuesday, April twentieth, twenty twenty-one. So at this point, this is, we are now accepting the budget and we are able to start to make changes. All right, and our next meeting on April sixth is our public hearing, where we will present the council budget and we will then consider changes to that budget. Go ahead, Councilor Manki.
Yeah, again, we make changes up until the twentieth. So historically, changes, the majority of changes come at, at sort of the, the eleventh hour. We just, we just had a marathon budget session, well, not marathon, but three hours of, of a Saturday just a few days ago to get the remainder of the budget. And we just had the, the final part of it today. So as, as the time goes on between here and the twentieth, I'm sure there will be some, some changes and adjustments, or at least a lot of consideration by, by both parties on, on this budget.
Well said, Councilor Manki. Any other discussion on this item? All right, I don't hear any motions coming forward at this point, so we will move on. The next item on our agenda is new business. And our first item for discussion this evening is the Joint Shared Services Recommendation. As mentioned earlier, the subcommittee met just yesterday to discuss several positions that could possibly benefit the town and the Board of Education through shared use by each entity. And I will turn the floor over to Councilor Nagel, who is the chair of that committee, to begin the discussion.
Okay, thank you, Mayor DeBino. I'll be, I'll be brief and try not to repeat too much what I said in response to those who called in earlier. It was a very robust meeting, good conversation and listening to different opinions and sharing different ideas. This particular shared service committee has met twice. So we had met before and we previously had set up, as I've told you, that we would be concentrating on finance, technologies, facilities and transportation. Those are the four that came up, but that we would instruct the town manager and superintendent of schools to come up with solutions, ideas, hire out how and if feasible, things could happen with those for a variety of different reasons. It was determined with their input that finance and facilities were the two areas where it might be more feasible, or at least would be more important to move through at this point without having total answers in either category. Facilities seemed to, on the part of the town manager and superintendent, seemed to be the most feasible, given that our town manager is placed back a need, the post for a facilities manager on the town side. And on the superintendent of schools, it said on their side that their person is retiring. So it seemed the perfect time, the perfect thing for, for development to, to happen. And there, at the meeting that we had recently, I believe that was more or less unanimous that this is something to go through and that that would be possibly the first item that could be resolved without too much difficulty in terms of getting done. Also, it was determined that finance was important. There was some discussion in terms of how it could be managed or if it could be managed. And if indeed, time-wise, how much time needed to have things done or not done. As a, as a result, as you can see, I believe it's on everybody's screen, Mr. Sylvia proposed this motion, which reads, and I wanted to make certain it was up there specifically, so that everyone could see exactly what the motion said and there isn't any confusion in terms of, of intent, though I do note some words may mean different things to different people. It reads, I move that this committee recommend, recommend the consolidation of the facilities and finance departments by September first. And it was seconded by Counselor Camillo. I did not carry unanimously, as I said, the, those who did not vote for it, and yeah, those of you that didn't make, correct me. It was the finance department that they were most concerned about and that everyone there, as far as I know, felt that the facilities matter could be done at this point. This is, we also recommended that the, there be discussions going on. And if there were glitches in the road, there are, but, but there is a, a date, at least the time, a beginning of a process moving forward as opposed to talking and, and talking about how to handle things and whatever. And we recommended that we meet on a weekly basis, the subcommittee, to help to see if what has been moved along and, and what else can be recommended. And at this, at this time, that basically is what was determined. This is not something that is being brought for a vote to the council. It is something that we recommended and put forth for both the superintendent of schools, the town manager to, to move, to hopefully resolve whatever differences there are and to try to come with a determination as to what to do and hopefully meet that date so that we can do things for the betterment of, of the town. If, at that point, I believe I've stated everything I've had. Mr. Chapman, do you have something you wish to add in addition in terms of what you discussed at that meeting? And our superintendent of schools, Ms. Brahman, if you have anything to add?
I, I am nothing at this time.
Okay.
Nor do I, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll send it back to you, Mayor DeBino, unless another member of the committee has a comment.
I see Councilor Ennis hands up, go ahead, Councilor Ennis.
Thank you. I'm just curious why you chose finance over transportation or I T.
I believe Mr. Chapman can answer that best. I realize that there were some union commitments that would have to be ironed out before one could move anywhere with that. Is that correct, Mr. Chapman?
Yes, there was a union that was formed about a year ago or less time than that. That included the, the department heads or supervisors of the transportation, the facilities and the I T departments. That complicates the idea of integration and consolidation because of the fact that there are bargaining union employees now on the, on the board side and in the administrative level that are not bargaining union employees on the town side. So that's going to create a problem. I'm not sure whether, what the, what the result or what the outcome is going to be, but it is a challenge that is going to be difficult to overcome.
Correct. Superintendent Brahman, wasn't the transportation position not part of that union?
That is correct. The, the transportation director is not in a union at this time. However, if he were ever to be replaced, that could change based on how the, it's essentially a three-man union right now, whether, whether that person would be hired and has the proper credentialing, he, he or she could join the union, but the current position is not unionized.
Thank you.
Mayor Bedraco?
Yeah, I. Regarding the facilities director. I wish there was a way this timeline could be accelerated a little bit because you can't go forward. Really with, with a search until you know how this is going to shake out. I mean, it'd be a new job description, probably in your new pay scale, whatever. So until this is resolved. Then we can't really even go forward with a search, correct, or until a recommendation is made? I mean, I just, I just wonder if, if maybe the two. Areas should be separated in terms of a proposal so we can accelerate the finance, I mean, accelerate the facilities part.
The present motion says that there, doesn't say there is anything that would prohibit one being resolved before the other depending upon. The difficulties that may occur with one or the other. So the intent was, was not to say they both are September first. But I believe that the recommendation is that move along and if something is able to be presented to. To the council on one or the other, that indeed. That's more than appropriate. I think we all want to see things move for the benefit of the town and not be tied one to the other. If indeed one is ready to be presented as opposed to the other by that time.
Well, Keith, when would you like to see a facilities person on hand?
Well, we're, we're budgeting for a facilities manager effective July first. We're meeting actually, I believe later this week or next Monday as a group, both. The superintendent and I and staff members to, to. Initiate the, the development of the, of the advertising and the job description that this person will be filling. Once hired and effective upon the retirement of the current facilities manager in the. School department.
Okay, so this, this sounds like a. Pretty much of a goal.
That's our intent. Again, we have this, this union issue that may, you know. Be a bigger challenge than we can overcome. I don't know yet.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I will say I attended the meeting yesterday as well and listened to the discussion and I know it was. Divided primarily on the finance committee, I mean, finance positions more so than the facilities. Positions are merging, but the way I kind of viewed it is the committee made a recommendation. Took a vote to recommend to the two bodies, to the Board of Ed and to the council. And at this point, it's up to the council. In and of itself and the Board of Ed in and of itself to kind of discuss the, the recommendation of the committee and decide where we want it to go and. You know, we're elected to set policy basically, and so we have to decide what we want that policy to be, and if we want our administrators. To truly dive into this and see if it's feasible for us and try to move it forward in a way that makes sense. That's what, you know, this council would need to direct the town manager to do with his staff, so. I see this as a recommendation from the committee. It's for us to discuss how we want to then move forward with it. It's not something we pass and say, yes, this is what we're doing today. That's certainly not. Something the council would do, but it is our job to direct the town manager as to what we want him to accomplish. In terms of policy and procedure moving forward, and if, if this council wants. Mr. Chapman to go ahead and try to make this work for us, then that's what we would need to direct him to do or ask him to do on our behalf, so. I think that's where we're at right now, and certainly no action being requested this evening. That's not the intent, but. Just to plant the seed that, you know, that is what we're elected to do is to give him direction and what, what needs to happen, so. I think as the discussion goes forward, I know the committee, I believe the intent, Mr. Nagel, is to. Continue to meet on a regular basis, as you mentioned, weekly. And make sure that the town manager and superintendent are getting the support they need from the committee to make sure that these things are moving forward in discussion and to see where we end up with these. With these ideas.
And also, as listed here, Mr. Sylvia will be presenting to the Board of Ed at their, their next meeting. This same information and sharing it officially with the Board of Ed.
Okay, and I know there's certainly a lot of. Details to be ironed out in the process and certainly some hurdles I'm sure that, that we'll have to consider and the, the union issues being one of them, but. But I think with the superintendent, with Superintendent Brummett and Mr. Chapman. Working together on this, you know, I have no doubt we'll be able to achieve some good things as we move forward. Council Mankey?
Thank you. I just want to also add that this is something that, that both parties have been working for, for a long time. We, both bodies, both the council and the, and the Board of Education serve the town of Newington. The taxpayers and people, and I'm cer, I'm certain we, we want the best for the town as a whole. I am encouraged that we have. Both the superintendent and town manager who are talking to each other. And, and, and working these things out, and I'm sure those, those two people can, can help to facilitate this process, but. Unfortunately, like everything else, the only way to save money is, is. Save money and provide better services is sometimes consolidation. And that seems to be the, the way that most big companies are going these days and certainly most towns will have to go eventually. And I think it's just a step in, in, in the process, and it's a process. It's not a. It's not a wave your, your, your hand in or a magic wand and have it happen. It's a process, and I think, I think. Starting the process is, is, is an improvement of just talking about it and, and doing nothing.
Thank you, Council Mankey. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. The next item on our agenda this evening is fiscal year two thousand twenty two state historic documents grant program application. I believe this is you, Mr. Prupinski?
Yes, it is. Well, it is that time of year again. The state grant for, from the State Library for Historic Documents comes due at the end of April every year. This year, I'm just continuing what we completed last year, which is the creation of accessible binders. Part of the change that I did make inside of this one, which we did a little differently last year when we first laid it out, was doing. Three books into a new accessible binder. And with this year's funding and speaking with my representative from the company that we utilize for the binders. It made more sense to change out the binders to be four books. I had a small increase in my current year's grant. And you'll notice it's a little higher than it was last year. Last year we were about ten thousand dollars. Five thousand of that will come out of my town clerk's fund. And then seventy five hundred will come back to the town from the State Library in order to complete the grant. So this one will specifically handle seventy five binders, again, in this case, four volumes in each of those. So we'll be effectively handling three hundred additional binders, so six hundred books. Over these two years will have been made more accessible for the public, more accessible for the staff and reduce the overall. Wear and tear on those pages. And in the long run, it saves us money in having to recreate those binders as well. The estimate that we received, as you can see from the grant breakdown, is the twelve thousand five eighty five. A large line share of that is the divider tabs that go in between each of those books. It's just better to have those broken out separately. It's easier for people to find them. And it matches the pages at the top, so they don't get confused when they're putting them back together. And then this, I know it's a little small, we'll see, but you'll notice that it's now a four book set instead of a three book set. So this will simply just move on to your following meeting for adoption. We don't need to do it in a rush. As long as it's completed and postmarked to the State Library no later than April thirtieth, we'll be well on time. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Great, thank you, Mr. Prupinski. Does anyone have any questions? I know we, this is something that we. Have had before us in previous years, so I appreciate the presentation this evening. Any questions, councilors? No? Okay, we're all set. Thank you, James.
Thank you.
All right, moving right on, the next item under new business is the Anna Reynolds School Project Architect Recommendation. So we, I know we have. Mr. Woods is on with us, the chairman of that committee. Welcome, Mr. Woods.
Thank you, Mayor. Pleasure to be here tonight. I'm in a little warmer climate than you guys are, though I'm still down in Florida, but.
There, and Zoom does come in handy for that, right?
It does. Zoom is one of the, for me, it's a lifesaver right now. It's, it's been a fantastic. Development that I've learned to adapt to very well, but we are here tonight, obviously, to request that you. Take action, if not this meeting, obviously at your next meetings. I know typically you don't take action when you bring in new business. And that's up to you, but we had excellent results. We went out for an RFQ, which is Request for Qualifications, got sixteen responses from different architectural firms. We actually did a subcommittee, narrowed that down to seven, narrowed that down to four, did in-depth interviews of the four firms. They were priced relatively comparative except for one firm. Castle Booze, as you can see, came out of the top. And they were a. Supported by the entire committee, which I might add, we have a really, really good committee here. We're working very well together. And I, I think we're going to be able to do a turnover, really good project for you as this moves forward. But Castle Booze came in. They are a little bit below the other, the other firms, but they did come to the top of the list. Everybody voted for them. It was unanimous vote. To support moving forward and recommend to the town council that you enter into a contract for a little over a million dollars to provide these services. For the Anna Reynolds project. And if there's any questions that I could answer for the council, that's about it.
Okay, great, thank you. I'll open it up. I see Council Mankey.
Yeah, Mr. Woods, other than, than the price, which is always, always good, what, what would, would make you pick Castle Booze?
Castle Booze, one, has got a long history with the town of Newington. And they actually had the best presentation. They had the, probably the most in-depth. Dive into the school itself. They spent most of their interview, which was around thirty five, forty minutes. Talking about the school itself and how to improve it. Where a lot of the other firms talked about how good they could do and things that they, they've done in the past, but Castle Booze really honed in on Anna Reynolds. And it stood out and, and it showed through the, through the interview process.
Just for the general public, what are some of the other, have they done other things in the town here?
Yes, they actually did the renovations for E. Green and. Anna Reynolds. They did those. They've done some recent projects for the Board of Ed. I am not familiar. I think Lou is still on the, the call. He could answer, he could speak to that. I can't. He, they were the original architect of record for the town hall before it passed referendum. But, and actually, John Castle lived in Newington, I believe, most of his adult life. He has since, I think he's retired now out of the firm. But there's, there's a strong tie to Castle Booze and the town of Newington. We, we've had a serious discussion with them, reviewed the contracts. We have a draft contract that they have already seen. And they are fully committed to perform the work, sign the contract that we've given them. And perform it at the prices that you'd see, which is, which is a good price.
Yes, to jump, jump in, Steve. The other projects, the Castle Booze has done for the town is they actually did. Simultaneously both renovated as new projects for Elizabeth Green and Ruth Chaffee. That was from two thousand five, two thousand eight time window. Back in the mid nineties, they did the comprehensive fires. Sprinkler system installation around all the schools in the district. And then they did the Transition Academy at Town Hall, where we had the flip of. The Police Department moving out to their new building and the Engineering Department going downstairs at the old town hall. So they did those two parts of the project. That was two thousand eleven.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comment or question from the council? Mr. Camillo, I know you were on that committee. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
Well, during the interviews. They had us right from the get-go. They came out and they had our attention. And very impressed with them. On other projects they've done in other towns, they've come under budget and within the time of getting the contract done. Looking forward to working with them.
Thank you, Council Camillo. Who else is on that committee? I'm looking around. I'm sorry. I don't want to forget anybody.
Chris Minor is on the committee, Mayor.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I gave everybody the equal opportunity.
There's a lot to remember, and it's hard, especially with Zoom, to, to look at all the faces and try to tie it all together.
I keep, you know, I'm trying to keep the, the participants window open and see who's got their hand up, but it's difficult. Chris, if you have anything you wanted to offer, you're welcome to. All right. Okay, I don't see any other hands or anything up, so we will move this to our next agenda for the council to take action. Does that sound, Mr. Woods?
Yes, that sounds very good. Thank you very much for your time tonight. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Mayor Woods.
Thank you.
All right, folks, we'll move on. The next item is resignations and appointments. I apologize, I'm trying to manage the paper copies. Give me one second just to flip ahead. All right, we have a resignation from Ms. Rayna. Council Anist, would you like to do that one?
Sure. Resolved that the Newington Town Council hereby accepts the resignation of Pamela Rayna as a member of the Lucy Robbins Wells Library Board in accordance with an email. Correspondence dated March ninth, twenty twenty one, and effective immediately.
Second, is there a second? Second of my Council Mankey. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Councilor Anist?
Yes.
Council Braverman?
Yes.
Council Budraco? Council Budraco?
Yes.
Council Camillo?
Yes.
Council Donahue?
Yes.
Council Mankey?
Yes.
Council Minor?
Yes.
Council Nagel?
Yes.
Mayor Dubino?
Yes.
Nine zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to our next resignation from Pauline Crook. Council Anist, is that you as well?
Yes, it is.
Okay, go right ahead.
Resolved that the Newington Town Council hereby accepts the resignation of Pauline Crook as a member of the Lucy Robbins Wells Library Board in accordance with email correspondence dated March fifteenth, twenty twenty one. And effective March twenty second, twenty twenty one.
Second, is there a second? Second of my Council Mankey. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Council Anist?
Yes.
Council Braverman?
Yes.
Council Budraco?
Yes.
Council Camillo?
Yes.
Council Donahue?
Yes.
Council Mankey?
Yes.
Council Minor?
Yes.
Council Nagel?
Yes.
Mayor Dubino?
Yes.
Nine zero.
Okay, and we will move on. We have one more resignation. Elizabeth Livingston?
I believe this one's ours.
Okay, go ahead, Council Mankey.
Although, Council Anist, we're like a tag team here, so. Resolved that the Newington Town Council hereby accepts the resignation of Elizabeth Livingston. As a member of the Lucy Robbins Wells Library Board in accordance with email correspondence dated March nineteen, nineteen, twenty twenty one, and effective immediately.
Second.
Second of my Council Anist, any discussion? All right, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Council Anist?
Yes.
Council Braverman?
Yes.
Council Budraco?
Yes.
Council Camillo?
Yes.
Council Donahue?
Yes.
Council Mankey?
Yes.
Council Minor?
Yes.
Council Nagel?
Yes.
Mayor Dubino?
Yes.
Nine zero.
Okay, and now we have some appointments. Council Anist?
Thank you. Resolved that the Newington Town Council hereby makes the following appointments. Human Rights Commission, Mark France. Member two eighty eight Williamstown Court, Party D, term three twenty three, twenty twenty one, to eleven thirty, twenty twenty three. Replaces de facto term of P. DeCara since twelve one twenty twenty. Library Board, Pauline Crook, Member one sixty five Walsh Avenue, Party D. Term three twenty three, twenty twenty one, to eleven thirty, twenty twenty three. Replaces the resignation of P. Rayna. State Insurance Committee, Jonathan Twister, Alternate, eighty one Woodland Street, Party D. Three twenty three, twenty twenty one, to eleven thirty, twenty twenty one, replaces vacancy.
Second.
Second of my. Second of my Counselor Manke. Go ahead, Counselor Anis.
I thought we had another one.
Do you want to amend the motion? Do you have was there another one provided? I'm not sure.
Yeah. Tim?
I don't have another one, right?
Yeah, I sent it.
But we were waiting for the resignation.
Oh, you're right. You're right. Okay, my apologies.
No problem. We'll get we'll get this straight, Carol, by the end.
I thought I saw it and I didn't see it. Okay.
Yeah, it was there and I saw it. Then we didn't get the resignation.
Yeah, I thought I saw it, too. I apologize.
No problem. Don't worry about it.
All right. So you read the motion in. We had a second. Is there a discussion? That's okay. Is there any just further discussion on appointments? All right, seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Anis?
Yes.
Counselor Braverman?
Yes.
Counselor Budraco? Counselor Camillo?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Manke?
Yes.
Counselor Miner?
Yes.
Counselor Nagel?
Yes.
Mayor DeBuno?
Yes.
Nine zero.
Thank you. All right, we are on to refunds. We have the approval of the March 23 refunds for overpayment of taxes. Deputy Mayor Padreco, if you would.
Result that property tax refunds in the amount of $2,599.91 are hereby approved in the individual amounts. And for those named on the requests for refund of an overpayment of taxes certified by the revenue collector, a list of which is attached to this resolution.
Second. Second of my Counselor Manke, thank you. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Anis? Counselor Braverman?
Yes.
Counselor Budraco?
Yes.
Counselor Camillo?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Manke?
Yes.
Counselor Miner?
Yes.
Counselor Nagel?
Yes.
Mayor DeBuno?
Yes.
Eight one.
Who did you not get? I'm sorry.
Counselor Anis? Yes. Oh, sorry. Thank you.
I can see her on camera. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, nine zero.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm just receiving a message from James Kropinski that he got bumped out of the meeting. I saw the message come up that I was now host. So just so you know, if you ask, ask for James, he's not on right now. He's having some internet issues. So technical issues at their best. All right, the the next item is approval of minutes of previous meetings. And we had amended the agenda. So we have before us March 9, 2021, regular meeting minutes, as well as the public hearing of March 9 also. I'll entertain a motion to approve those as written.
So moved.
Counselor Manke, is there a second?
Second.
Second of my Counselor Donahue. Any discussion on those? All right, seeing none, we'll move to a we're keeping you busy tonight, Susan. Another roll call.
Counselor Anis?
Yes.
Counselor Braverman?
Yes.
Counselor Budraco?
Yes.
Counselor Camillo?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Manke?
Yes.
Counselor Miner?
Yes.
Counselor Nagel?
Yes.
Mayor DeBuno?
Yes.
Nine zero.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, just for the public satisfaction, I know it seems monotonous, but protocol for a Zoom meeting is that we do a roll call vote for each vote just because we can't always see or hear each other in unison as we can in person. So it seems a little monotonous, but we're trying to do the right thing. All right, the next item on our agenda is written in oral communications from the town manager, Mr. Chapman.
I have nothing tonight.
Okay, thank you. Next is council liaison committee reports.
I have something.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Padreco.
Yeah, I can't get to my hand raise. Okay, just in from TPZ perspective, in case anybody's interested in the topic, the poultry oh, God, proposal has been the public hearing has been continued for at least one more evening. So it will be tomorrow night at 7:00. The first public hearing was held last, I mean, two weeks ago, generated, you know, several comments, both pro and con. So if anybody's interested in it, the public hearing has been continued until tomorrow.
Thank you, Bill. Any other council comment or question under council liaison committee reports? All right, I don't see anyone with their hand up. We'll move on to public participation. Any member of the public may join us and raise their hand in the participant window if they're in Zoom. If they're on on their phone, they can do so by punching in star nine. And one second, I need to just scroll up. All right, I believe we have Miss Lyons with us.
Hello?
Hello, go ahead.
Rose Lyons, 46 Elton Drive. I find it interesting that you just mentioned that because of protocol, you're having a roll call vote. I've been watching all the TPZ meetings that are being held and with public hearings and things like that, they just they don't do a roll call vote. I know you can't answer the question. I just find it interesting that a committee or a commission that an appeal can be taken does not do a roll call vote, and yet the town council does. I appreciate you doing the roll call vote so that we know who is voting which way. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons. Good night. All right, I'll just give it a moment to see if anyone else raises their hands in our participants window. I don't see anyone else. So we will move on to remarks by counselors. Oh, go ahead, Counselor Braverman.
So in today's Herald is a beautiful article about Newington girls moving on to the second round in basketball. Full page with pictures, very nice. I will save it, bring it to the next meeting that we see each other live. I'd be happy to see that. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor Braverman. Anyone else have anything? Okay, I don't see anyone. We will continue on. And the next item is a motion to adjourn. Moved by Counselor Manke and a second. Everybody jumped on that one earlier. Where were you all? Seconded by Counselor Donahue. Thank you. Any discussion? All right, one last roll call vote, please, Susan. Uh-oh, did we lose Susan, too?
Sorry, I'm sorry. I couldn't unmute myself.
It happens.
Counselor Anis?
Yes.
Counselor Braverman?
Yes.
Counselor Budraco?
Yes.
Counselor Camillo?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Manke?
Yes.
Counselor Miner?
Yes.
Counselor Nagel?
Yes.
Mayor DeBuno?
Yes.
Nine zero.
All right, thank you. We stand adjourned to this evening at 8:58. I think that's a record for us in the last few months.
Girl, you can.
Thank you, everyone. We'll see you soon.
All right.
See you.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye bye.